Good evening, I'm glad to see everybody came out this evening to our business meeting. We're gonna have our invocation by Dr. Wesley Green, Senior Pastor of Amazing Grace World Outreach Church in Forest Park. If you would, stand with me, it'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we've paused tonight, first to give thanks. For, Lord, you've been mighty good to us, we thank you for bringing us through the storm, through the wind, the rains, we thank you, Father. And, Lord, we give you praise for that. We also, Lord, pause now to pray for those who lost homes, lost their cars, their businesses, and, Lord, some families lost lives, loved ones. And so, Lord, we lift up those who have gone through these hurricanes, and we ask your blessings upon every home and every family. And, Lord, even now, as different places are being hit by hurricanes, we pray for those, every one of those areas. We pray for those in Mexico, we pray for those in California with earthquakes. And, Father, we just ask, Lord, that you would have mercy and to bless every person, Lord, that's having to deal with these situations. Now, Lord, I pray for our Chairman, Chairman Turner, and for our Commissioners, Lord. I ask your rich blessings, your wisdom and revelation knowledge, to flow freely as they make decisions that affect each of us here in Clayton County. We pray for our Police Chief and his staff. We pray for our Fire Chief and his staff. We pray for all of our Judges, our DA, our Solicitor General. We pray for our Sheriff, Lord. And, Lord, we ask that you would just speak a blessing over this county and command your blessing over Clayton County. Lord, we live here and we enjoy being here. It is a great county, and we ask your blessings continually, make your face to smile on Clayton County. One of the greatest counties in this state of Georgia, Lord, over 200 acres and trails and fishings there at International Park, we thank you for it. We thank you for Clayton State University. We thank you, Lord, for one of the best water authorities in this country, the Clayton County Water Authority. We thank you, Lord, for our school system, the fifth largest school system in Georgia with over 54,000 students, under the direction of our new Superintendent, Dr. Beasley. We ask you to bless our kids to perform at the highest levels that they've ever performed at. And, Lord, your blessings upon our school system. Lord, we thank you that we are the home of the busiest airport in the world. And, Lord, we ask your blessings on that airport. And, Lord, I'm asking that you bless us with businesses here, and, Lord, you bless us with industry, and, Lord, just smile upon us. We decree and declare that the first shall be last and the last shall be first. And, Lord, we thank you for blessing us to be first here in the state of Georgia, Clayton County, Georgia, one of the greatest counties in the great state of Georgia. And, Lord, this is thy servant's prayer, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I bless y'all.
Amen.
I bless you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Amen.
You can have that, I don't need that.
Good evening. Did want to welcome everyone to the September 19, 2017 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. And with that, if I could, please, the planning and zoning staff is recommending the removal of item number 37. This is listed on page eight of your agenda. This is a zoning petition. The applicant is Adam Richards on behalf of Anvil Block Property Investment, LLC. The applicant is withdrawing this application.
Is the applicant here? No.
He's sent in an actual email, letting us know that he's withdrawing that petition, which means it's dead, void, null.
I just want to make sure that he was not here, so I would've had him do so verbally. But I'll make the motion to remove it. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
And once again, item number 37, the zoning petition for the request for a modification to the villages of Ellenwood Plan Unit Development. This item has been removed and the applicant has withdrawn this application. Does the Board want to offer any further amendments?
Madam Clerk, I'd like to remove item number 29, Appointment to the Development Authority, Redevelopment Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay, it's three, two, it passes.
And Chairman, can I please ask, how many weeks have we removed this item from the agenda?
Do you have that information, Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk, how many weeks have we removed this item from the agenda?
Commissioner Warner, I do not have a precise number, but I did want to say at least within the last two months, maybe about three to four times.
Okay, thank you, let's go to the next.
Thank you.
And that was just an estimation, Commissioner Warner.
Thank you, ma'am.
Are there any further amendments? Hearing none, may we have a motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
Motion to adopt agenda with the approved amendments, Mr. Chair?
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It's three, one, uh, four, one, I'm sorry, it's approved.
Approval of the September 5, 2017 Regular Business Meeting minutes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The Board has one proclamation to present this evening. Clayton County recognizes Brenna Harrison for her national soccer accomplishment, as presented by Commissioner Franklin Warner. Is Ms. Harrison here, as well as family and friends, may come forward at this time, as the Commissioners join you for the presentation of the proclamation.
And the proclamation reads, Clayton County recognizes Brenna Harrison, a Clayton County student athlete. Whereas, Inter-Atlanta is proud to announce that Ms. Brenna Harrison, a Clayton County student athlete, has been selected for one of only 32 spots for the Generation Adidas International Invitation Only Training Program held in Lyon, France. Olympic Lyonnais is one of the most successful clubs in women's soccer. Lyon-selected program players will receive training and professional coaching at the French club. And whereas, Brenna was born in Fairbanks, Alaska, and currently hails from Jonesboro, Georgia. She is a rising junior at Jonesboro High School and has attained a 3.7 grade point average. Brenna has answered the call of the pitch, soccer field, and has gone from playing recreational soccer since the age of three on fields in Clayton County's Lovejoy Soccer Complex, in becoming one of the top players in her age group at age 16. And whereas, Brenna prides herself on being a versatile player that has IQ in every position within soccer. She looks forward to the program to assist her in approving her game, as well as helping her learn new things to make her a more crucial player. And whereas, Ms. Brenna Harrison's hard work has paid off, and she proudly states, "When I was selected to be a part of this Generation Adidas International, it was a little piece of my dream coming true, and I am eager to keep on going." Now, therefore, I, Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner on behalf of Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby call on all citizens to join me in recognizing Ms. Brenna Harrison for her dedication, academic excellence, and outstanding achievements. In witness thereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 19th day of September in the year 2017. Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner.
And they are twins, y'all know I'm a mom of twins, so if you saw me smiling, like, even generously, it's because you all warmed my heart, I'm so proud of both of you, and I'm looking forward to what you will do when you go over to France, bring that, bring that wind home now. She said, "She already did it." Well, we glad you came, huh? But congratulations, her GPA is how, 3.8, by the way. And we gotta say thank you to the wonderful principal. Y'all did turn out wonderful. Wonderful.
And next aboard, we hear a presentation, Clayton County Government Employees Year 2020, Student Recruits in the Firefighter Pathway at Drew High School and Monday's Mill High School, as presented by the Fire Chief. Presented by Fire Chief, EMT Director, Landry Murkison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I just wanted to take a minute and introduce you to our firefighter recruits, our cadets that are in our program. As you know, I made a presentation a few weeks back where we talked about this new exciting program that's been approved by the School Board, as well as the Board of Commissioners, in which we are now teaching our firefighter recruit and EMT programs in the public school system. So who you have before you is 14 of the 21 that have enrolled in this program. I have two seniors, one junior, and the rest are sophomores that are entering their first year of corps. And I do want to extend a heartfelt thank you to both Mr. Townsend from Drew High School, the principal, and Dr. Green of Monday's Mill, who have made this process both seamless, painless, and exciting for all of us. As you can see, we've already taught them to walk in a straight line, so that's good. But the exciting part here is that at the end of this year, hopefully, if they, if my seniors apply themselves, they will be extended job offers with my organization right out of high school. Dr. Green, Mr. Townsend, would y'all like to say anything?
Just an outstanding opportunity, we really appreciate the Commissioners, the Fire Chief for pulling us all together and making it happen, the Board of Education, Dr. Beasley, we're just excited about these exceptional students, our future, so thank you, thank you. I would like to say congratulations to the students and thank you for your support. Thank you from Clayton County for what the trust that you have put in these students. I want to thank Dr. Green for working with Mr. Arnold, who put this together, Ms. Chilis from our CTA Department at Clayton County. You've done an outstanding job, and kids, I wish you the best.
And I did just want to take a minute and thank the parents of these fine students, A, for entrusting them to us. This is our first group of kids that we have instructed. Normally, we have firefighter recruits, so it's been, it's been a learning experience for us and them as well, but we've been pleasantly surprised with their enthusiasm. Thank you so much to Commissioner Gregory, once again, for all of her hard work in getting this program up and off the ground. It's truly been a team effort. Thank you to you, the students, for stepping up and being willing to look into becoming a public servant and what that means, so we look forward to a... Yes, please, if the parents are here, will you stand up, raise your hand, come in, so we can recognize you. We have, we've had multiple sessions with our parents as well. We've talked to them about what this job is, and so far, none of them have called us crazy and taken their child and ran, so... Also, Mr. Emery Arnold, who is teaching the corps program, there he is. Emery is a former employee of ours, a former firefighter, and as we always say, they may leave, but they always find a way back home. So he's back and teaching in the fire department, so congratulations to y'all. We look forward to a great school year, and more importantly, we look forward to a 30-plus year career in Clayton County. Congratulations to all of you. You're the photographer. All right, guys, we need y'all to all consolidate in this area if we can, so... This is where we get closer, become even better. Yeah, for some of you guys, come up here and say, "D, so we can get..." So we got 15 now. Right here. Oh, three, one, two, three. Again, one, two, three. Very good.
The Board would now consider the request of Director of Central Services, Carol Rogers.
Please take them together, Ms. Rogers, unless a board member wants a single one out. Hearing none, proceed on.
Good evening, Chairman.
Hold on a second, let's give my opportunity to move out.
I'm a point of privilege, please.
For those that are leaving, this is the most important part of your meeting. Please consider staying. Please consider. And thank you for coming, it's so good to see so many citizens who care about the business of this county. So good to see you this evening.
Ms. Rogers.
Okay. Once again, good evening Chairman and Commissioners. I have eight items to present tonight on behalf of Central Services for your recommendation and approval. The first one is the September monthly, the August monthly report for Central Services. The monthly report is for contracts, contract modifications, and change orders that are authorized either by myself as the Director of Central Services or by the Chief Operating Officer. I have two items to present. The first one, we executed on August the 23rd, 2017. Our COO, Mr. Stanford, executed a written contract amendment in the amount of $3,125, and this is with Freestyle Productions, LLC, for DJ services for the senior service department. This was from RFP 16-96, which is concert promotion services for Clayton County, Georgia. The next item was executed on August the 23rd, 2007, once again by our COO, Mr. Stanford. It was a written contract in the amount of $73,400, and this is with Engineering Solutions of Georgia for the foundation stabilization at Fire Station Number 14, and this is from RFP 17-50. I would like for your request for you to approve the report concerning these expenses. Next item is a recommendation for Amendment of Contract Number 2014-Y, which is Electronic Monitoring Services and Equipment for the Clayton County Justice Court. This is using the U.S. Communities Cooperative Agreement. The recommendation is to amend the contract, replacing the current price structure for electronic monitoring services with a revised price structure, which does not include installation services by the vendor. And to also add two new services, which is the Loc 8 GPS unit and the Buy Smart Link phone app. Once again, we're using a U.S. Communities Cooperative Purchasing Agreement with offender monitoring solutions with BI Incorporated, located in Boulder, Boulder, Colorado. The Board of Commissioners approved the award on July the 15th, 2014, and funding is available through the Juvenile Courts Contract Service Fund. Next item is a request for the First Contract Amendment for RFP 15-03, which is firefighter protective gear for Clayton County, Georgia, which is an annual contract. The request is to amend the current contract with Bennett Fire Products Company, Inc., located in Woodstock, Georgia, for specific items due to a manufacturer's price increase. The items are listed within the contract amendment, and funding is available through the Fire Department's Fire Fund and General Fund. Next item is Recommendation for Award, and this is for ITB 17-11, which is Ball Field Renovation Services for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation for award is to award to the overall lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meet the specifications, that is Benson Construction Company, Inc., located in Tifton, Georgia, and funding is available through the Parks and Recreation Splits and General Fund accounts. Next item is Recommendation for Award of RFP 17-67, which is Revenue Discovery and Recovery Services for Clayton County, Georgia, for the Community Development Department. The recommendation is for award to the overall lowest responsive and responsible proponent, meet the specifications, which is Government Revenue Solutions, LLC, doing business as Revenue Discovery Services, located in Birmingham, Alabama. This is a revenue sharing contract, which means the proponent will receive 30% of the revenue collected for the Revenue Discovery Services, and the county will retain 70%. The proponent will also receive 50% sharing of the auditing fees, and the county will receive 50%. There will be no cost to the county. Next item is Recommendation for Award of RFP 17-102, which is Travel Management Services for Clayton County, Georgia, for the Senior Service Department. The recommendation is for award to the overall lowest responsive and responsible proponent, meet the specifications, which is Kelly Tours, Inc., located in Garden City, Georgia. Funding is available through the Senior Service Department General Funds Account. The next two items are for the same vendor, they're separate items that we're requesting to terminate the contract. The first one is Recommendation for Termination for Contract 2012 for Tracket Software Solution, I'm sorry, Software Superior, LLC. This is to terminate the contract with Superior, who is located out of Lake Mary, Florida. Superior, LLC, was awarded the contract by the Board of Commissioners on August the 14th, 2012. This is a contract that's held by the Community Development Department. The next one is Recommendation for Termination of Contract for RFP 15-61. This is for the Comprehensive Justice Management and Information Services for Clayton County, Georgia. The recommendation is to terminate the contract for convenience with Superior, LLC, located in Lake Mary, Florida. Superior, LLC, was awarded this contract by the Board of Commissioners on December the 6th, 2016. My request is for you to approve the recommendations, authorize the Chairman his designee to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contracts, and to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budgets accordingly.
All right, do I have a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on any of the items?
I have a question. Since I, on the report, and the report was given on an item that I had to abstain from, so do I need to take that item separately?
We'll take it separate. And what number was that?
It was just a report, it was just to accept the report. So I don't know if legally, since I abstained from it, if I could even vote on a report.
We have, yes, that's item number one, right?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
I do, I do. Ms. Rogers, number seven and eight, the two that were combined at the end.
Yes.
Could I get some context? The message, the note from the Community Development says that, "We're not intending to terminate the current service agreement with one solution." Why did we want to terminate that contract with them in the first place, in order to go through the RFP process and award it to somebody else, and why did we decide to go back and keep them anyways?
So the one solution was the original contract that we awarded, and then at that point, we changed it to the Tracket. That was another, but, so the one solution no longer exists as a contract. It was brought to you originally as one solution, and then we changed it to the Tracket. So what we're asking tonight for you to approve termination of the contract for the Tracket now.
No, it says, "We're not intending to terminate the one solution," they're the same company?
Right, the one solution was, is the same product offered by Superior, and it became the Tracket product.
So it was just like a name change?
Right, for the actual document.
Mr. J.K.
It sounded like we had a company with the product, we decided we didn't want to use it, we went through the RFP process, ordered a new contract, then changed our mind, that's not...
Uh, no, it was, Superior was, always had the one solution, we just went to Tracket with the same vendor.
Okay, okay, I don't need any more explanation, that's good enough, thank you.
Any other questions?
The only question I have, is this going to coincide with what we have in place with Tyler? Is that going to coincide, the Tracket system?
Yes, Commissioner, part of the reason, the rationale for the termination is that we trying to ensure that we have economies of scale with our new ERP system. So the ERP system that we presently are bringing onboard will help integrate, so all the systems are talking to one another, so that was part of the rationale for us actually coming forth with the termination.
Okay, and we're sure that this will interface?
Yes, ma'am.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, if not, we'll take item number one separately. First, is there a motion for approval of the...
There's a motion and a second already out there.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Okay, with that being said, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. It's all together.
Yes.
You can abstain from number one.
I can abstain from number one.
Go ahead and state. Commissioner Warner abstained from item number one, so it's four to one, one extent, abstention.
About approval on everything else.
Yes.
Now, the Board would consider the request of Chief Financial Officer, Ramona Bivens.
Good evening, Commissioners. Before you tonight, I have three budget amendments. Budget Amendment 2-8, in the amount of $221,820 for the Fire Fund, and this is to carry forward funds for records management with Image Trend, that was approved on the June 5th, 2017 meeting. Budget Amendment 2-9 for Probate Court, in the amount of $88,940, and this is to amend the budget to provide additional funding to cover the cost of an Associate Judge approved by the Board of Commissioners on the 9/5, 2017 meeting. The third budget amendment is Budget Amendment 4-17, in the amount of $17,500, and this is to appropriate funds from fund balance for surveys of the southern perimeter of International Park for Phase Four of the International Park Trails.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is that a second?
I'll second it.
Are there any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Item number 10 is an announcement of the finalists to be interviewed for the Buildings Maintenance Director position, Human Resources Director, Pamela Ambles.
Good evening, citizens, and thank you all for being here. Good evening, Commissioners. Uh, good evening, Commissioners, Chairman. Human Resources would like to introduce the three finalists for the Building Maintenance Director. The finalists are Kara Clayton, Benjamin Hopkins, and Larry Lott. All are external candidates. Interviews were conducted on August twenty-ninth and thirty-first. The interview panel consisted of COO Stanford, Deputy COO Kohelis, HR Director Pam Ambles, and Central Services Director Carol Rogers. Carol Rogers. To promote trust and pan transparency, a public interview book that actually documents the process is available in Human Resources for, for public viewing. And HR is located at one-twenty Smith Street, right next door.
Thank you, Ms. Ambles.
You're welcome.
County Attorney Jack Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I have one resolution and five department requests for your, for your consideration.
Take them all together, please.
Yes, sir. Resolution two thousand seventeen sixty-five is a resolution authorizing a sign location and maintenance agreement with UHS of Anchor LP, a Georgia corporation, to convey an easement for the right to locate and maintain a sign within the unpaved right-of-way of Godby Road to authorize the chairman to execute the amendment to provide an effective date of the resolution and for other purposes. Item twelve is a request from the Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services that the Board of Commissioners allow the service to accept a donation from the University of Georgia as part of the infectious diseases transport network. This donation of a disinfection unit and a mobile isolation transport system will be free of charge. Further, it authorizes Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required. Item thirteen is a request from the Clayton County Community Development Department to submit its consolidated annual performance and evaluation report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development by October second, two thousand and seventeen. Prior to the submission, the county must complete its public notification and participation process, which concludes with an approval of the study by the Board of Commissioners. Community Development Department is submitting a legislative request along with the, the executive summary, complete document exhibits for the Board of Commissioners review in advance of the regularly scheduled meeting on September the nineteenth of two thousand and seventeen. That was submitted, and the notifications have been made. This is the final approval for the submission. Item fourteen is a request also from Community Development that the Board of Commissioners approve passing the credit card processing fee as a convenience fee to the customers obtaining building permits, business licenses, alcohol licenses, and all other related department services. Also, to allow the Finance Department and Community Development to negotiate a rate not to exceed three percent per transaction, or a flat re, rate not to exceed five dollars per transaction. Further, it authorizes the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Item fifteen is a request from the Transportation and Development Department that the Board of Commissioners authorize Georgia Power to proceed with upgrading post-top street lighting fixtures to LED technology. The net result of the third phase of the lighting upgrade will be an additional five hundred and fifty-two dollars and eighty-five cents. However, the combined total of all three phases of the upgrade program has produced an annual savings of one hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-three cents. Further, it authorizes the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. And finally, the item sixteen is a request from the Department of Transportation and Development that the Board of Commissioners authorize the execution of an amendment to the PACT, the Performance Agreement for Comfort from Train Agreement for Maintenance Activities. The maintenance agreement covers the landfill's gas, excuse me, gas well field and the power generation plant, as well as five boilers located at the HR Banky Complex. Further, it authorizes the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the agreement, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement. Could I, let me also point out with regard to the last item, that there is a, an amended amendment or an amended agreement that was produced and, and made a part of the record that's been executed and made a part of the record by the, with the clerk tonight. That's all we have, sir.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motions, there a second.
Second.
Are there any questions on any of the items?
I have a question.
I have a question as well.
Commissioner Warner.
The amended agreement, that you said you provided it to the clerk, did you have copies for the entire board?
Do we have copies for everybody? The clerk has the copies for everybody.
Okay, could we please review those, if you don't mind? And is there any way that we can get these amendments before we come to the meeting? Because as Ms. Mullen said, it just, even if it's something small or minute, it does give the appearance of um, of things that are just not as they should be, which goes back to even the zoning issue, because I, I, we need to make sure we get this ahead of time if we can.
We can certainly, we can certainly do that if we have it ahead of time. Uh, and if you'd like for us to deliver them to you in some other manner, we'll be glad to do that. Uh, and we can talk about the zoning when, anytime you want to, because there's nothing wrong with the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
Order, please. Commissioner Ambles.
The train contract, it's, it's been a few years, but it helped me understand the context. There was, there was a guarantee savings that train would give back to the county if we didn't generate enough money and save money over the period of time. So, is there an analysis or an accounting of that before we renew it for another five years? The last time I asked for that, of, from the CFO, I, I don't remember ever getting a response.
With regard, and I don't know about that, but with regard to the specific amendment that is before you, the contract calls for an annual adjustment of the maintenance rate. And this simply makes that annual adjustment. And it is done based upon the calculations that have transpired to this date.
But do those calculations include the guarantees, the guaranteed savings? And are they net of that? Or do we, and how much are those savings?
The, the, I think you're talking two different things.
It's possible.
Within the train agreement, there's a performance agreement for ten years.
Right.
An aspect of the overall agreement was maintenance of certain aspects. The original contract only specified fees for the first five years because unknown factors. Where at the end of the fifth year, this one will address year six through ten to bring it in totality for the whole train agreement.
I understand that, but what I'm asking for is an accounting of their guaranteed, guarantee against our cost savings over that ten-year period, or at least for the first half, before we approve a maintenance contract for the second half. And has it been saving us money? And if so, how much? And?
We can provide you the records we have on the contract.
Okay, do they, do they have, or do those records contain the calculations for how much we saved? And if not, how much they gave us as per the contract guarantee?
I believe so. Off, off the top of my head, yes, sir, I believe so.
Okay, so we write them a check, and then they write us a check back?
Uh, I don't believe they've written us a check to date. I believe their services have shown a, a net benefit to the county.
I, I don't know. Is that, is that true, or do we not know? Because if we don't know, I'd like to hold this until we find out the information. Because that was a giant deal.
Definitely. I will have to agree with that.
So Commissioner, we can get that information, and certainly, I don't think this is time sensitive. We can certainly bring that back at the next board meeting.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know if, what this board's pleasure is, but I'd like to have all of the information.
Just amend your motion, just amend your motion to exclude this one.
Who made the motion?
I think you did.
I was supposed to say.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you.
All right, well, I will amend my motion to table, what, what's this?
Chairman. Just to remove?
Item number sixteen, Mr. Chairman.
So one of the questions is actually, the maintenance agreement actually terminates at the end of this month. So it will terminate prior to the next board meeting. So we're trying to figure out what will be the impact if in fact we don't.
It's like a two-day window, right? Three-day window?
Yeah.
Dennis, when you guys get that, when the Finance Department gets that information, could you break it down annually for the first five years?
Yeah, we're, we're typically not the recipient of that um, information that train reports on an annual basis to us. I think in the past, it has gone to Buildings and Maintenance and to, I think, Mr. Matarco in future years. So um, we'd be happy to work with them to come, to put something together so that you're able to, to look at what um, train has reported, the savings has been.
So if there was not a savings, that would be a contractual, or who would do the invoicing to them? How would that work?
Well, that's information that, that they're going to get for us now. Is there an impact, a negative impact to us if we tabled this?
Let me suggest that rather than tabling it, what you do is uh, that you authorize, it's fine to table this, but what I'd like for you to do would be to authorize the chairman to execute an extension of the agreement for thirty days. That.
Please, please, let's have order. Go ahead.
That way, you don't, if we can get it executed, then we don't run the risk of it expiring and them coming back and saying, "We're not going to provide service, and we're not going to extend it," because you missed the opportunity to extend it. So if we can get them to extend it for thirty days, you're not approving any of the changes. You're extending it in the manner in which it is presently exists. Uh, then that, that takes away the risk of it terminating.
Ms. Ray.
It's only three days. We, could we extend it three days to the, to the, to the October third meeting?
Yeah, yeah. I, I'm just asking you to au, to, to make a separate motion to authorize the chairman to execute an extension for some period of time that gets us past the next meeting.
I'd be comfortable with three days or four days.
I, I make a motion that it's extended.
It's not your motion to make.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay, uh, okay, with that being said, I will amend my motion to.
Why don't you remove it, and then we'll just vote on them all, and then we'll just?
I'll remove it. That's a good idea. I'll remove item number sixteen from my motion for the continuation of the PACT maintenance agreement with Tran USA, Inc., and ask for the approval of the remaining items. Is there a second?
Okay, second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
All right. So, going back to item sixteen.
So we gotta, now that we gotta approve.
Oh, approve the uh, remaining items. We already have a motion. And a second, those in favor, aye.
So moved.
Aye.
Those opposed? Is unanimous. Going back to item sixteen, PACT, is there a motion? Maintenance agreement.
I'd like to make a motion to extend the existing agreement through October fourth.
Specifically with?
Let's do it through the end of the week, just so that we would get, we'd have two or three days after you meet to get the documents signed and exchanged.
So that would be the sixth.
Sixth, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion that we extend the existing contract through October sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
Is there a second? Uh, second, is there any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Is unanimous.
Do, need an executive session for litigation, personnel, and real estate.
Thank you.
The next nine items are streetlight petition additions. And item number twenty-six is a new streetlight district. Mr. Chairman, did you want me to take all of those together?
Please do.
The first nine items are to accept a streetlight petition addition to existing streetlight districts for the following subdivisions. Country Lane South, District Three. Madison Point, District Three. Oakview Homes, District One. Oxford Park, District Two. Thornhedge, District Two. Sunny Dell, District Four. The Spivey Club, District Four. Sherwood Forest, District Four. Wiltshire Estates, District Four. And the last one is to accept a new streetlight district, Embassy Trace. This is District Two.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Is unanimous.
And the next items are board appointments. The first is the appointment to the Development Authority, Redevelopment Authority Board in the urban.
We tabled that.
No, we didn't. No, we didn't, not that one, Mr. Chair.
Just number twenty-nine.
Chairman, we tabled, we removed number twenty-nine.
Okay, I apologize.
And Mr. Chair, I'd like to offer a motion for Dr. Alika Anderson to serve on that board.
Hold on a second, finish your, uh, Madam Clerk, go ahead and finish your, your statement.
And the Urban Redevelopment Agency of Clayton County to fill the unexpired term of Sharon Russell, who has resigned. The term expires on March first, twenty nineteen. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
Yes, I offered a motion for Dr. Alika Anderson. Again, um, you know, with this board, when we talk about economic development and working with the school system, we always hear a school system that helps economic development. They're, they're so related. And I think it's a value to have a member um, from the school system serving on this board to help us with the economic development. And again, I offer that uh, motion to appoint Dr. Alika Anderson to the Redevelopment Authority Board.
I have a question, Chair.
Is there a second?
A second?
All right, any questions?
I almost feel like I'm on like the Gong Show or something, because, I mean, what is the order? And I understand this, but what is the point of order? I mean, we need to come up with a better way to put people on these boards, because both of us spoke at the same time. So it's almost like, whose voice did you hear first? There's no way to press a button. And where I do agree that we need to bring those from the school board on the board, but I stated when I first got on this board, this process fathoms me. I don't get it. It seems totally out of order.
There needs to be a better way. Order, please, order. I, I agree with you, there needs to be a better system, but in lack of thereof, I listen to the first voice I hear, and that's the one I call out. So, that's the process, but we do need to modify our, our system here. All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Is unanimous.
Item number twenty-eight, this is also an appointment to the Development Authority and the Urban Redevelopment Agency of Clayton County. And this is to fill the expired term of Eldren Bell. This is a four-year term expiring on March first, twenty twenty-one, and this is a full board appointment.
I make a motion, Chairman, uh, for that board, yes, that we appoint Ms. Ray to that board.
Order, please.
And the, and the reason I say that is because so far, except for the last appointment, which I do have a great deal of friends there, this board does not represent this entire county as it should. It is really swayed in one direction. Ms. Ray, please give us your last name again. Ms. Ray James.
I'll second the motion. Any questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
That's, I didn't hear everybody. Uh, what was yours, Ms. Ambles? Okay, three, two, a fails.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Mr. Eldren Bell.
A second?
Excuse me, let, let me say this. You know, we do appreciate y'all coming, and we value you to the end of the earth. But at the same time, it's something about mutual respect. We need you to be respectful of the people, not only during public comment, but when we are making comments as well. It's hard to hear and pay attention what's going on when we hear other comments coming at us. So just a little common courtesy, I would definitely appreciate it. Was there a second on that?
Second, yes.
Okay. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Nay.
Nay, it's three, two, it passes.
And can we state that he lives in Spivey as well?
Mr. Chairman, didn't you originally put him up there? Who put him up there originally?
He's no longer the chair, he's no longer.
Yeah, no, that's irrelevant. Let's move on. Madam Clerk.
Item number thirty. This is an appointment to the Family and Children's Services Board to fill the unexpired term of Deborah Lazarus, who has resigned. This term expires on June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations?
This is for the Mental Health Board?
No, Family and Children's Services.
Hearing none. Items thirty-one through thirty-three are appointments to the Mental Health Development of Disabilities and Addictive Diseases Community Service Board. The first is to fill the expiring term of Bernie Beaumaster. This is a three-year term. All terms are expiring on October seventh, twenty twenty. These are full board appointments. Are there any nominations?
Like to nominate Ms. Rhonda Lane. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
And the next is to fill the expiring term of Brian Flowers. This is a full board appointment. Are there any nominations? Hearing none.
Oh, wait, one second. I would like to ask with, um, Dr. Anderson, not Lea Anderson, Dr. Henry Anderson, if you would like to serve. We can hold it until the next meeting.
Just hold it. We'll hold it, Madam Clerk. Hearing no other nomination.
Okay, and the last is to fill the expiring term of Martin Thompson. This is a full board appointment as well. Are there any nominations?
I'm waiting to hear back from him, but, uh, unless somebody else has a nomination, we can hold that as well.
Okay, and the last three items are zoning petitions. The first, the applicant is Rogelio Sanchez, and the request is for a conditional use permit from Article three point two-two, General Business District, to allow for a service station. The subject property is located at seventy-seven eighty-seven Jonesboro Road, Jonesboro, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff recommend to table this matter. The zoning advisory group also requested to table this application. Uh, this is Commissioner District Four, Vice Chairman Edmondson.
Didn't we remove this from the, uh, agenda?
No, sir.
Which one got removed? I'm sorry, I got the numbers backwards. Oh, okay, backwards.
Yeah, is Mr.?
Miss Clerk, is, is it appropriate to make a motion to table or just not to consider it? How do we proceed?
Ms. Smith?
Do I need to make a motion to table or do we just not consider it or from advertising and how do y'all want to do it?
Kimberly Smith, Planning and Zoning Administrator, I would, um, not consider it. The applicant has actually withdrawn the application. And it was tabled at the ZAGG meeting. So it can come off.
Okay.
Okay, we need to take any action for it to fall off. Okay, move on to the next, uh, Madam Clerk.
Okay, the next zoning petition, the applicant is Martin Wiggum on behalf of Cummins Inc. The request is for a conditional use permit for truck service. The subject property is located at Zero Frontage Road. This is Forest Park, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAGG, are recommending approval. This is Commissioner District Two, Commissioner Hamburgh.
Okay, is the applicant here, Mark Wiggum? Please come forward, sir. Please, sir, state your name.
Martin Wiggum. I'm a director for Cummins Incorporated.
Excuse me.
We're in the process of.
Can we just check and see if we have any opposition? Because if not, I just want to go ahead with the approval.
Okay, anybody opposed to this zoning request?
Is there anyone present that wants to speak, uh, in opposition of this zoning petition?
Okay, Commissioner Hamburgh?
Okay, I would like to, um, recommend approval.
Is there a second?
A second, that, Mr. Chair.
Any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
And the final zoning petition for this evening, the applicant is Chris Jackson Enterprise Inc. On behalf of, behalf of Gilliam Community Church, the request is for a conditional use permit, uh, for a place of worship. The subject property is located at sixteen seventy-one, Highway one thirty-eight, Jonesboro, Georgia. The planning and zoning staff, as well as ZAGG, are recommending approval. And I did want to make one correction. This is Commissioner District Four. This is Vice Chairman Michael Edmondson's district.
All right, is the applicant present, Chris Jackson, or anybody on his path?
Do we have any citizens that wanted to speak in opposition of this zoning petition? Any citizens that wanted to speak in opposition of this zoning petition?
Please state your name and who you represent. Chris Jackson?
Yes, sir. Good evening, I'm Dr. Deborah Brown, Lieutenant Colonel, United States Army, retired.
Thank you for your service.
That's right. I actually have some packets for you all. Each of them should have your names on them. Basically, what's included in the packet is a synopsis of who we are, Gilliam Community Church. So this evening, we just wanted to give you a kind of a, a background of who we are and what we're actually, um, seeking. If you look on page two, it tells you a little bit about who we are, our vision, and our mission statement, so I won't read that to you all. But I did want to give you the background about Gilliam Community Church. In two thousand and five, the Base Realignment and Closure Act, which is BRAC, commissioned, recommended, and the Congress approved the closure of Fort Gilliam Chapel, which was located in Forest Park. With that announcement and approval, our chapel was closed. And many of the Fort Gilliam Chapel family members expressed the concern and they wanted to keep our chapel family together. Many had been in, a part of that church for thirty-plus years. And so when they told us the church was going to go away, we wanted to stay together as a family. And so our chapel advisory president at the time, who is a retired Chief Warrant Officer Larry Lee, a retired Army Lieutenant Colonel, Marvin Brown established a transition support team. And with that support team, we did a survey within the chapel to see that we were moving out in the right direction. Once that happened, we decided to move out. We started having our service, um, in College Park. Then we found the location as in Morrow, sixteen seventy-one Adamson Parkway. We've kind of outgrown that, and with that, a blessing came, and we found some land, which has the exact same address, but it's now in Jonesboro, is sixteen seventy-one Highway one thirty-eight. And what we're doing this evening, we know that that's divine faith, that that happened because that came after about seven years. Can I say, can I get amen in here?
Amen.
So that's definitely a transition, yeah. So we're standing before you this evening to request the approval of that land. And I'm going to have, um, Chris, Minister Chris Jackson, who also served on the, um, committee with me, to get the property, acquire property for our church.
Well, like you said, um, we want.
Speaking to the mic, please.
We've outgrown, uh, the space on, uh, Adamson Parkway, and, um, we want to build, uh, a worship facility where we can continue to grow, and we want to continue to, uh, pour back into the community. And, um, the facility is going to be a, uh, fourteen thousand square feet facility. And, um, we have the support of the community and some of the businesses in the area. And, um, this building is, uh, a building of technology, is going to, um, enhance, uh, the environment and, um, the sustainability of safe construction. So we would like for your support on this.
Okay, is that your presentation?
I also wanted to kind of conclude to tell you who we are. We are a non-denominational, spirit-filled congregation. It started off with predominantly military individuals, and now we have grown within the community to pick up many civilian, um, individuals who have partnered with us. We are members of the Clayton County Chamber of Comrades, and we've done several things in our community over the last six years. We have assisted with Hosea Feed the Hungry. We've worked with the veterans in our community. We've donated to the Haiti Relief Fund. We've helped with homeless, with local homeless shelters. We conducted shoe drives, where we worked also with Mayor Burke, when he was the mayor of Morrow, and we did the first annual Walk from Obesity campaign. There are several things that we're doing with our youth. We make sure our youth are involved in the community, giving back to the community. Our, our mantra for our church is Gilliam Community Church, bringing the church back to the community.
All right, thank you. Again, is there anybody here, um, opposition to this request? Anybody speak out in opposition? Somebody back there? Come forward if you, uh, want to speak. Anybody? Commissioner Edmondson, you have a recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. Thank you for the additional information about your church and the good work that you do. Bambi Lane is a part of a neighborhood of homes, and I realize that it fronts Highway one thirty-eight. That's a commercial node that our planners designed with the overlay standards and, uh, the widening of the state highway and things for, um, some large-scale commercial use. And, uh, and I don't feel that this fits that standard, uh, although I, I wish y'all the best of luck. I'm going to recommend denial.
Is there a second on it?
Second.
Any questions?
I do. I understand that it is for commercial property. And I understand the challenge of having churches that are coming in and then we don't receive taxes from it. But however, in this particular case, and I understand that in the past, except for when it came to Jonesboro, we honor whatever the rec- you all have honored, whatever the recommendation is of that particular commissioner. So with all of that being said, I don't understand why we would deny it, considering that it is not to their fault that Fort Gillim was closed. It is not to your fault. I thank you for your service, and I feel that it is only right, especially since Clayton County is receiving a benefit along with the city there of the Fort Gillim project moving forward, which is a commercial project, that we should help find a place for you all to be. So I would say that it really hurts my heart to see that we can't find a place or allow a place for those who have given their lives to serve this country for the right to be able to serve their God. To serve their God, to have a place to continue to serve their God. And let me say our God, let me get it right. And I wish you can break out in a song today with that beautiful voice, Reverend Chris.
Only thing I'm going to say is with everything that's going on in the world today, anybody or any organization, especially a church, that's going to step up and do things for our children, that's going to provide for those in need, then we need more of that, so. All right.
Mr. Chair, and I'm going to say, you know, just like, um, I always say, um, district commissioners, you, you know, you've, you've heard from your citizens and what they want and what they don't want. Just like tonight, you know, with this zoning, I mean, you made your voices loud and clear with the zoning about the, um, uh, e-commerce place in, um, Ellenwood. And I respectfully, um, follow whatever that district commissioner has talked to his citizens about and what they want. I know Pastor Charles, who used to pastor the church, I was skimming over your information.
Right, we now have Pastor.
And he's a great guy and so forth and.
Chairman, and I'm going to go back and forth. Yes, sir, but I want to say this. Look at the minutes. We made a decision to move property in District Three when I opposed it. So we can't have it one way at certain times and another way at another time. The bottom line is, if it's denied tonight, this board is making a decision to not allow those who have served our country to fight for the right to serve God, to be able to serve God in a location. And for that, we will bear that.
Any other comments, statements, questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay, well, okay, we're voting on his, the denial, so it's nay.
It's two nays, it passes. Oh, thank you, God.
No, it passes for the denial.
No, 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 his denial passes.
He denied it.
His denial passes. His recommendation was to deny. And it passes three, three to two. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This does conclude this evening's agenda. If there is no further discussion, there was a request to go into executive session on real estate, personnel, and real estate personnel and.
Litigation.
Litigation.
One more point of privilege.
Let's get this out.
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So move.
I'll second it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Before we leave, the first thing I want to say is thank you again for everybody that came. We had a wonderful HOA boot camp this weekend, and I'm going to tell you, you stepped up and it was a wonderful event. We thank you for it, and at the end of the day, please know that things are not always as they seem and don't ever give up hope. Don't you ever lose hope.
You ready, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Motion to recommit. I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed?
Uh, we have two settlements for the board's approval. First is a settlement, um, Catherine Price, arising from an accident occurred on May fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, at the intersection of Highway one thirty-eight and Beach Road in unincorporated Clayton County for the amount of eight thousand dollars. Um, you want me to do it together?
Yes, please.
And the second is, um, settlement with Charles Williams relating to an accident that occurred on August eighth, two thousand and fourteen, at the intersection of Terra Boulevard and Upper Riverdale Road in unincorporated Clayton County in the amount of forty thousand dollars plus, um, payment of, um, some, of the mediation costs in the amount of seven hundred dollars. So forty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
All right, do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions on either item? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
It's unanimous.